Hi, just doing a mic chat, can you guys hear me?
I hear you, yes.
Hello, Mr. Alabon. Councilwoman Clark, how are you? They didn't hear me? Hello, Mr. Alabon, Councilwoman Clark, how you doing? Can y'all hear me? I don't think they're hearing me. Councilmember Rob, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Very good.
Alright.
Mr. Alabon, can you hear me?
I can, sir, can you hear me?
I hear you well. Councilmember Clark, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great. Mr. Quinn, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, I can hear you.
Very good.
This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Haslett. I call this meeting to order the City Council meeting of Haslett, Texas, at seven oh two PM, October the first, twenty twenty one. Uh, just a few items for those online, uh, via teleconference or, um, uh, phone. If you would have your mic muted throughout this and only open it up when, uh, you're going to speak, that helps us with our audio here in the, uh, council chambers. So, the, uh, we do have a quorum. Uh, the quorum present in the chambers is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, Councilmember Ricketts, Councilmember Nahira, and Mayor Gary Holsey. The, uh, online via teleconference, we have Councilmember Rob and Councilmember Jessica Clark. So, it, uh, item two, if you bow your head with me, we'll offer the invocation. Father God, we just thank you so much for this community and the people. We just pray your wisdom and blessing that we serve them to the best of our abilities. In Jesus's name, amen. And if you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, citizen participation and comments. Uh, it's an opportunity now for any citizen to, uh, uh, speak to the council. Uh, I do have one, uh, public meeting appearance card, and that's, uh, Ms. Marilyn Broyles, and would you like to speak now? Or is there, I don't see a specific items, so please come ahead. And your name and address, please.
I'll repeat. My name is Marilyn Broyles, and I live at one four zero six Nettle Lane, uh, Haslett, seven six zero five two. I want to address an issue to the council that is of concern to me and many other Haslett residents, the traffic and speed on Highway one fifty six. It is dangerous for residents that are entering and exiting one fifty six from the subdivisions that they live in. It's also dangerous for parents and school bus drivers transporting children to and from school in daycares, especially in the morning darkness. It's dangerous for the postal workers as they go back and forth to the post office and they deliver mail along one fifty six. It's dangerous for the customers and clients that frequent places of businesses and churches along one fifty six and for emergency vehicles leaving the fire station with no caution light to alert the drivers. Highway one fifty six is dangerous because, one, parts of one fifty six are not level, or either they're on an incline, and this incline causes drivers to miscalculate the time it takes to turn on to one fifty six over onto the incline. It's dangerous because the speed at which cars and semi trucks come over the bridge is accelerated, deceiving drivers into thinking that they have more time to enter Highway one fifty six, and this has resulted in a recent fatality. It's dangerous at the intersection of Blue Mound and one fifty six where drivers consistently run the red lights, especially cars going north and south. I personally witnessed six run it the other morning about six thirty in the morning. Um, and I wonder how many tickets are being given out to people that are running those red lights. I haven't seen any, but maybe the council can investigate that. It's dangerous because the traffic speed of forty-five and fifty-five miles per hour on one fifty six does not make it safe to turn on to or exit the highway. I would like to ask the council, council to investigate lowering the speed limit on one fifty six to thirty-five miles per hour within the city limits of Haslett. I also request that the city install caution light signage at the daycare, schools, and fire department along one fifty six and request more police presence. The towns of Justin, Ponder, and Crum all have thirty-five mile hour speed limits through their city limits, and so I think it's time that Haslett do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and you bring up a very important and pressing point on this today.
Can I ask you one question? On the, the six ran the red light, what intersection was that? Just for my note.
Is there any others that'd like to speak that may be online? I don't see anybody online other than the council and staff and, uh, Mrs. Holsey. Very good. We'll go to, uh, item four. The items of community interest. Uh, and council or anybody would like to speak to this. Uh, National Night Out, this coming Tuesday, tomorrow, October the fifth, at, uh, eight PM, uh, it's gonna be a great time. There's gonna be a fireworks show. Uh, come out, enjoy. I know there's gonna be a lot of handouts. Uh, you'll have, uh, a lot of, uh, local representation there with booths. Uh, so just come out and enjoy the, uh, National Night Out celebration and have fun. Alright then, the next is our annual Haslett Hustle, October the sixteenth, Saturday at nine o'clock. The race starts at the Community Park. The, uh, the five K fun run and walk. The, uh, again, there will be sponsors. Uh, it is always a great time. How long have we've had the Haslett Hustle? Jeez, I bet it goes back seventeen, eighteen years. It's been a long time. Uh, maybe longer than that. Uh, so, uh, please come out, enjoy. It's always a great time. Well, let's go to item five then. Staff reports an update on active items, projects, and event recaps. Uh, Mr. Quinn, City Secretary.
Yes, we're continuing to accept applications. We're doing them. It's a ongoing process.
Alright, the, is Mr. Rogers with us tonight? Haslett Park Soil Project. I will tell you then, um, is that it is very near completion. Um, and the next phase will be the seeding and, uh, of that aspect of it. But, uh, I've driven it multiple times here just a couple of days ago. I backed over the weekend, and, uh, they've done a good job. I think everybody will be, uh, very well pleased. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, I know you live in Haslett Park. Any comments on it?
I agree that they've removed the porta potties and all the material and the sides look good where they went back in and added the shoulder. So, I'm excited for the stage.
Good deal. Very good. Uh, Public Works Authorized Equipment Purchases Update, uh, Mr. Rogers. There's Mr. Rogers. Uh, we cannot hear you. Not yet. Nothing yet. Well, I'll proceed, Mr. Rogers, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Of course, everyone knows we got our zero turn moors. Uh, and you saw pictures of it in the, uh, um, newsletter. It came out with the water bills. Uh, I, I'll say that the, uh, these, these men over there at Public Works could not have been more excited. And then, here last week, that excitement got to a higher level. They received their new track loader. It's a Bobcat, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Rogers? Yes. It looks like a transformer. It's very nice. Uh, it's very nice. It's first class. It'll last many, many, many years, and, uh, Public Works greatly appreciates it. Thank you, City of Haslett. Uh, the Fire Station Spoils pile. Um, Mr. Rogers, is that mic working yet? Try it again.
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Uh, maybe I just don't have it close enough to me. I don't know. Uh, yeah, the contractor that's looked at Malt Net Soil, uh, he's got some stuff coming up. He thinks he's gonna have some trucks, probably gonna be first of November, but it could be right towards the end of October, and he'll be able to start hauling.
That's, uh, that's good news. Very good. We, we can hear you. The audio is a little weak. I don't know if you can move your mic a little closer or anything like that, but... So, what we heard is, uh, around the first of, uh, November or the latter part of, uh, of October, uh, the contractors has trucks available and they'll start moving.
That's correct.
Update on Keller Haslett Bridge. I don't think we need to tell anybody that it's open. It's open.
It's open.
Are they still out there doing a little cleanup work, miscellaneous task?
Yes, they're doing some minor stuff. Uh, they're out there every day watering the sod to keep it going, but yeah, they're just doing some minor little cleanups here and there.
Very good. Uh, anything you wanna add under, uh, just reports or updates?
No, I just wanna thank council for that, uh, new skid steer. That is gonna be exciting when we get to get it out and start playing out on the road with the planer, cause that will speed up road repairs considerably.
Very good news. Very good news. Uh, next is our Annex Office. The, uh, I don't see Mr. Chambers online. There's Mr. Chambers. How about that? They pop, oh, y'all just got the video off and everything and pop up when you hear your name. Mr. Chambers, you wanna give us an update on the Annex Office?
Absolutely. We've been coordinating. Uh, Katie has been helping with the IT, Chuck with some of the construction, redoing the front.
Can you get a little closer to your mic?
Yes, sir. Is that a little bit better?
That's a little better.
Alright, I'm usually too loud, so, uh, this is an unusual problem. Uh, the countertops were put in today. There is some final paint work that needs to be done, but the switch is in, so we are anticipating a move this Friday. It could slide to Monday depending on how everybody's scheduled, but right now we are planning on moving into that office this Friday.
And when that move happens, we'll do a news flash announcing, uh, the Annex Office and those services that'll, that are, uh, transferring over there again, is building inspections, code enforcement, permitting, and Mr. Chambers is gonna relocate over there as well. So, it, uh, everybody's excited about it. If we could go to item six. Consent Agenda. We have, uh, six A is approved for regular city council meeting minutes of September twenty, twenty twenty one.
I'm good to make a motion with two amendments. Um, on item six, I wanted to add that Mayor Holsey informed council that the updated engineer's report would be present in the next monthly report. And then I also wanted to add on item nine, for the motion to reflect Mr. Schwanki as part of a company and not, oh, wrong one. Let me find it. I believe it was nine to add cost as, oh, it, it, Mr. Schwanki to be appointed to council with rates given. So, I, I'm willing to make a motion to approve with those two amendments.
And that the other is to define that, uh, Mr. Schwanki was hired, uh, or is retained at the rates as presented. Is there a second?
I second that.
Uh, there is a second. I'll have a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
So, I, I'm willing to make a motion to approve with those two amendments.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes five oh. Seven A, Public Hearings, Ordinances, Resolutions, and Action Items. Seven A, Discuss Consider An Actual Nomination Of Candidates For Appointment To The Tarrant Appraisal District Board Of Directors For The Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Fiscal Year And Approving Resolution Thirteen, Twenty Twenty One. So, the nominations will go out by way of resolution. Uh, this process is, we make those nominations. We have five votes for, uh, Tarrant Appraisal District. And on the screen you see, uh, these are nominees I'm putting forward that, uh, Mr. Richard Diotti and Gary, what's Gary's last name? I'm sorry. Gary Lasada. And also there's a recommendation letter here from, um, Mayor Newton, Mayor of Collybill. Um, and I have spoke to others concerning these two candidates, and they've been doing an excellent job representing the people and bringing good change to, uh, Tarrant Appraisal District. Uh, nonetheless, the process, we've sent in the nominations, and then, uh, Ted will send us back, uh, I'll say voting record, voting card. And we, and we have five votes. We can assign all our votes to one nominee or the other, or split them between the two. And if, uh, any, any of them, anyone has nominees, uh, you know, in addition to these votes, that's, that's great as well. Did I read the nom, the, uh, recommendation letter? Alright, I see heads shaking. No, it's there. You can read it.
So, do we make the motion as the resolution or name the nominees? I'm, I'm ready to make a motion. Help me.
I guess I'm just concerned if that's what happened until December fifteenth. Um, do we have time? Is other people interested in this? Do, you know?
We had this out on the, uh, website and did a news flash, and we had no response.
Okay. Is there a time period that's true or?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All must be submitted by October fifteenth, so there, therefore, we won't be able to submit anything in November.
Yeah, it's this meeting or we miss that nomination period. So, I, I'd go ahead and recommend, if you gotta, if you wanna make a nomination, go ahead and do so, and we do that, and then, uh, that we can make, uh, then we can approve the resolution. So, it's a two-step process.
Okay. This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. I make a motion to nominate Richard W. De Ott and Gary M. Lasada to the Tarrant County Appraisal District Board of Director.
Motion is made to nominate Richard W. De Ott and Gary M. Lasada for Tarrant Appraisal District. Is there a second?
It's Councilmember Ricketts. I'll second.
There is a second. I'll have a roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahira.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh. Let's go to, for the nominees, and let's go to the, uh, Resolution Thirteen dash twenty twenty one. Do we have a resolution here? Here we are. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Haslett, Texas approving the nomination of candidates to be placed on the ballot for the Tarrant Appraisal District Board Of Directors election. Whereas terms of the five members of the Board Of Directors of the Tarrant Appraisal District are due to expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty one, and whereas the deadline to submit nominations to the Chief Appraiser of the Tarrant Appraisal District is October fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And whereas all eligible nominations submitted to the Chief Appraiser shall be placed on the ballot for the Tarrant Appraisal District Board Of Directors election, and whereas based on the amount of the twenty twenty adjusted tax levy imposed by each eligible taxing unit, the Tarrant Appraisal District has calculated the number of votes allocated to each entity, and whereas the City of Haslett has allocated five votes for each of the five positions to be filled. Now therefore be it resolved by the Has, the City Council of the City of Haslett, Texas, that Section One of the City Council of the City of Haslett does hereby nominate the following individuals to be placed on the ballot for the election of members to the Board Of Directors of Tarrant Appraisal District, that being Mr. Richard W. De Ott and Mr. Gary M. Lasada. Section two, a copy of this resolution shall be provided to the Chief Appraiser of Tarrant County Appraisal District by October fifteenth, twenty twenty one. Presented, passes, and approved this fourth day of October, twenty twenty one. A vote of five a's and zero nays and zero absences at the regular city council meeting of the City of Haslett, Texas. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
This is Councilmember Ricketts. I'd like to move to approve Resolution thirteen dot twenty twenty one as read into the minutes by Mayor.
Motion is made to approve Resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty one. Is there a second?
Councilmember Nahira, I second that.
There is a second? Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Motion passes five zero. Seven B, discuss, consider act on nomination of can- candidates for appointment to the Denton Appraisal District Board of Directors. For the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three and approving resolution number fourteen dash twenty twenty-one. Uh, council, I have no nominees to set forth for your consideration. Uh, does anyone here have any nominations or, uh, those on a video conference, any nominees for, uh, the Denton Appraisal Board? Then I would, uh, propose that no action be taken. On item seven B on this resolution. Since therefore.
It's Councilmember Rob, uh, I would, I would move that no action be taken.
Motion is made to, uh, that no action be taken. Is there a second?
It's Councilmember Ricketts. I'll second.
There is a second. Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nah- Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Motion passes five oh zero. Thank you, council. Item seven C, consider an act on resolution number fifteen dash twenty-one. Approving the form and authorization, authorizing the distribution of a preliminary limited offering memorandum. P L O M for the City of Hassett, Texas, Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-one. Which is, uh, Hassett Public Improvement District Number Five, Improvement Area Number Two. The project being LaTerra. And resolving other matters incident and related thereto. Uh, I will turn this over to Mr. Chambers and Mr. Alabon. Mr. Alabon.
Yes, sir. If it pleases you and the council, I'll start off on this, uh, item. You have others online that can add to or answer any questions that council may have. Um, Tripp Davenport is with the underwriter. Um, he's online. Um, I, developers attorney Cory Admire is also online. And our PIT administrator, uh, Kyle Sikorski, um, I think is supposed to be at, accessed by phone. Um, he was at another meeting tonight. Now, Kyle, are you on the line?
Hi, Rob. Yes, I'm on.
Okay, perfect. So I'll lead off if it pleases the council. Um, as the mayor stated, this does relate to the LaTerra residential development. Um, in February twenty seventeen, council created, um, Hassett Improvement District Number Five, LaTerra Development. Uh, the city authorized the creation of the district and the issuance of up to thirty-six million dollars in bonds. The district to finance certain public improvements as authorized by the PIT statute. Um, benefit of the property within the PIT district. Bonds were to be issued in phases. As council will recall, council previously approved the issuance. Of six million dollars, six million seventy thousand dollars. Bonds relation to improvement area number one for the LaTerra District. So where we are now is developers ready to proceed with phases two and three of the LaTerra development. Which in combination is improvement area number two. Um, and so there's a desire to proceed with bond issuance, uh, for improvement area number two remainder of this development. So in order to proceed with the bond issuance, uh, for improvement area number two, council will need to authorize the distribution. Of preliminary limited offering memorandum or the P L O M, as the mayor said. And authorize the use of the P L O M, marketing and sale of the bonds by the underwriter, F M S Bonds. Uh, the P L O M was prepared by the underwriter based on information provided by the city's consultants, developer, city staff, all in combination. Resolution that's proposed approves the form and the content of the P L O M. Substantially the form that's presented, uh, before you tonight. However, s- some changes or amendments can be made. Um, after approval tonight, um, as may be approved by the mayor prior to release. P L O M final, uh, document for, uh, use in marketing the bonds. It's a long document. If you've been through it, uh, you'll see generally P L O M includes description of the city. The LaTerra development, um, who the developer entity is, uh, what the PIT district consists of. Describes the PIT's city, I'm sorry, PIT administrator. Development agreements between the city and the developer, authorized improvements to be built. Service and assessment plan, reimbursement agreement between the city and the developer. Assessment ordinance, bond ordinance, uh, along with summaries of the terms of the bonds, um, and those, and those requirements. Pertinent documents will be attached, the P L O M document. And, uh, P L O M will then be turned into the final offering memorandum on the sale of the bonds. So I think there's, there's some few blanks in the document. Details of the bonds that will be sold, the bond terms and the interest rates and such are not determined as of, as of tonight. So, uh, the city's PIT Subcommittee reviewed this P L O M document. Subcommittee and the city's PIT consultants, uh, have reviewed and recommended approval by the council tonight. And, uh, as I stated, we have a number of people online who can add to or correct anything if I misstated any of that. We will all try to attempt to answer any questions that council may have about this.
I have a couple of questions, please. Well, for, who, who are the members of the Subcommittee?
The Subcommittee, go ahead, go ahead, Councilman Rob.
This is Councilmember Rob. Uh, I'm one of them. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow is the other. Uh. And their, the PIT administrator, the, uh, city administrator, the city attorney. Um. There are members of the Subcommittee. There's probably more left out. Oh, the, uh, the city's bond counsel, John Martin. Uh, which, who I think is online. Perhaps there are others, Rob. Go ahead.
Uh, John Martin is with the city. He's the city's financial advisor. Um, Bob Dransfield is the city's bond counsel. Um, and, uh. Finance director of the city, I think, is on the Subcommittee as needed, uh, as well. Jim, am I missing anybody on that?
Okay, good. So we have, uh, two council member representatives on this. All right.
Yes, sir.
So I see that we previously authorized issuance up to thirty-six million. That we have already issued approximately six million. What is this issuance?
Uh, I'll let, I'll let Tripp Davenport or, uh, chime in on this. My understanding is it's, uh, it's gonna be about eight million dollars. Cory?
That, that's correct. Mayor and council, good evening. Cory Admire, um, attorney for the developer. As you recall, the council has previously levied. Eight million dollars in assessments against improvement area number two. Um, and so these bonds are supported by those assessments the council has previously levied. And so the issuance is set at eight million dollars in original par amount of the bond.
Very good.
This is Councilmember Ricketts. I'm just curious. I see that the backup documentation is on there for the eight million dollars. Is there any way to make sure that we add that? Um, that amount to the executive summary?
That we stipulate this is an eight million dollar issuance is what Councilmember Ricketts is stating, cause there's nothing here stating the, the, uh. Amount of issuance.
Correct.
We will. You can make that in your motion if you so desire. And that, that's a very good idea to do that. Uh, Cory Admire, any comment to that? We're going to include in our motion the issuance of eight million. You good with that?
I, I'm fine with that. Um.
Rob, you good with that?
And I believe I heard the request that, uh, the executive summary, it be added to the executive summary. Is that correct?
That it should be added to the executive summary when we bring these bonds up like this. How much we are asked to, uh, give approval to? Rob, you're good with that?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, any of our council people that represented us on the Subcommittee? Councilmember Rob.
Uh, this is Councilmember Rob. Uh, like, was mentioned, uh, we met last Friday and went over this document. Uh, it, it's, it's pretty much identical to the one, uh, we did before, except for. This is phase two and three. That was phase one. So that kind of data changed, but to, uh, uh, form and substance and. That all appeared to be, uh, uh, complete, uh, as it should be, and we, we recommended approve.
Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, you concur?
Yeah, I have nothing to add. That's, that's correct.
Okay. Then, uh. I would ask for a resolution. Think it'd be appropriate that it come from Rob or, uh, Morrow. Or you wanna make it?
Sure. This is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. I make a motion to approve resolution number fifteen dash twenty twenty-one. Approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a P L O M for the City of Hassett, Texas. A Special Assessment Revenue Bonds, Series twenty twenty-one. For PIT District Number Five, Area Number Two Project, and resolving other matters incident and related thereto with an eight million dollar bond.
Motion is made. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Did I interrupt somebody? Motion is made to approve resolution fifteen, twenty, twenty-one. Uh, noting a eight million dollar issuance. Is there a second?
Councilmember Rob, seconds.
There is a second. Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Thank you, council. Motion passes five zero. Seven D, discuss, consider an act regarding the renewal of the interlocal agreement with Tarrant County Sheriff's Office. For policing services for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. The, uh. Can we bring that item up? Seven D, there you are. Okay. Uh, the fee has not changed. Same as last year. Seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents. Uh, monthly payments of sixty thousand. Eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and fifty cents, and that is for, uh, twenty-four seven coverage of two patrolmen.
I had a question. I don't know if, uh, Mr. Quinn can answer this, but on the fifty thousand that we allotted for overtime, um, how much did we actually use last year?
Uh, my conversation, uh, this is going back, uh, two months. I met with, uh, Chief Kane. And, um. Jim, help me out here. Who's the supervisor sergeant?
Sergeant Howard Lemongon.
What? That, uh, they had not used any of it. Right. That they, they, they strive not to have to use.
I thought we had already used some previous in the year, but it wasn't a lot. But they said they used zero?
Jim, you got anything to add to that?
Yes, they haven't really charged the overtime for the extra police officer, relief deputy since about November. They may have extended two or three thousand dollars, but Sergeant Lemongon said they haven't really used it and that if we should reconsider, we could. Uh, you know, that's his money we, we save, but they don't use it at all anymore.
So, uh, we might consider, uh. But I would recommend that we keep it there and should we need some increased patrol for, uh, traffic mitigation, then, uh, it's at our disposal.
I was gonna ask that question since the citizens were concerned about people running the red lights. Is that something you can request for these guys to sit out there at peak hours? And I, I've seen it too. You, when you drive by there, when it's dark, these guys think there's no one there and they zip right through there. So ma- maybe we discuss with them to see if they can control that area.
I'm gonna ask them if they got an unmarked car. Those people aren't gonna run red light if there's a, 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 uh, uh, police vehicle there. It's just not gonna happen. And I guess that's the difficulty of it all. Uh, nonetheless, um. But absolutely. Uh, we have met and several times and is to, uh. Express our concerns and it's all about traffic. Um. There's some unfortunate aspects to it, not having shoulders in some areas to pull vehicles off. Uh, that's very specific to Blue Mountain Road. There's nowhere to pull anybody off. Uh, the other being, and that likewise on one fifty-six, there's places you just can't pull them off. But I have seen them pull them off anywhere. If it's anywhere, they, they pull them off, uh, on one fifty-six and there's, uh. As far as citations, there's a lot of activity. I'll say a bulk of the activities on Westport Parkway. So, uh. But that's on the top of our list and, uh, we have both, uh, ourselves and the engaged as to determine what we can do about this.
I got another question. I, I think in previous meetings I said that they don't actually pull over the eighteen-wheelers. Is that, is that the case?
Not on Blue Mountain Road, they don't.
So it's only on that specific road to enforce the no, no trucks?
There's nowhere to pull them over is the whole point. They, if they pull them over, then they would essentially have to stop both lanes of traffic. One, there's nowhere to pull over, so they'd have to stop in the lane they're in. And then there's a big safety issue for all the incoming traffic. They would need to stop. Uh, so it's a very difficult situation where we have right now. And plus also our ordinance is written, it's. There's no through truck. So they'd have to be able to monitor, when did you get on Blue Mountain? And when did you get off of Blue Mountain? So you got to travel the entire length of it. So we'll consider rewriting our ordinance. If you're on Blue Mountain Road, makes no difference when you got on or off. Uh, that's open, that's liable for a citation. But there again, there's nowhere to pull them off. That's their dilemma.
Councilmember Howard, your question more about the not driving where they're supposed to or speeding?
Uh, speeding. I, I actually was coming down one fifty-six northbound and on Blue Mountain Road. An eighteen-wheeler actually went on the turn lane and to pass me up and ran the red light. Cause he was going so fast, he couldn't have stopped. So in that case, if an officer's there and sees it, you know, they have to be able to stop them.
Right.
Or, you know, that, that's just very unsafe for a big vehicle like that traveling at that speed. If you hit somebody, it's, he could have killed me and probably a few other people if he would have.
Well, you know, maybe an idea and it's been, you know, I've often considered, well, maybe for a time period, we, uh. Uh, we get four or six patrolmen out here and just plant down. It's in domestic. It's just not gonna be tolerated. Uh, it is for two patrolmen during the day or any throughout the entire time period. Uh, especially that prime shift, you know, when the track they're going during the workday. Is where you, when you see all of this, you know, going to work during the workday and in the, in the evening. Uh, you got two patrolmen, but yet they are responding. uh, you got two patrolmen, but yet they are responding to other, whether it be domestic or commercial, and they spend a, or, uh, alarm, building alarm, things of that nature, so they, they spend a lot of time responding to those type things. Uh, we, uh, I have not entered into the business of telling them what to do and when to do it. And, you know, when do you put a priority of, uh, uh, of a building alarm over sitting here watching for traffic violation? Uh, I'm not that, I'm not the best person to tell them how to do their job. I think they assign it, you know, to what is most important, and they respond accordingly, and it might be just the number that we ha- don't have. But again, they, if you have a marked vehicle sitting at the intersection, I don't think that guy would flow through the intersection like this. Everybody's very conscious when you see a marked vehicle. Uh, there are, I think, uh, you know, there are things we can do, and, but I'm drifting off, and I'm letting us all drift off this item. So, let's bring, uh, let's go back to the item itself, seven D is the, uh, renewing the interlocal agreement with Tarrant County Sheriff's Department.
Okay, the numbers don't, you mentioned the seven thirty on the previous screen, but this is a, a slight increase from the seven hundred and thirty thousand to seven hundred and thirty-two thousand? If I'm reading that correctly?
And where are you looking, oh, seven, the contract is presented at a cost seven hundred and thirty-two, which is under the budget amount of eight hundred thousand. So let's go back here, is that we have the calculated patrol of seven hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents. I'm going to state that we should go with the seven hundred and thirty thousand and forty, for, uh, four hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-four cents. I have calculations here to support that, I don't have anything on the cover letter to support the additional two thousand dollars.
Um, okay, the ILA though also has reflected seven thirty-two. So I wasn't sure which one was correct.
All right, then I'll revise, that goes seven thirty-two.
And then I didn't know if Councilmembers Rickett or Nahara wanted to know about the fifty thousand and what that, that was for, or you're just good with, let's just keep it the same for the, uh, overtime associated expenses that we didn't use it hardly at all, so.
Say that again?
I wouldn't want to give you the refa- give you the information, but I know Mr. Quinn probably could, why that was discussed last year.
Would you repeat that?
I was wondering if they wanted the background on the fifty thousand dollars and why that's in the, in the contract, or the, um, interlocal agreement?
Yeah, if you could just briefly say, I, I mean, it's, I'm assuming it's for, um, on account of what costs that you could use, use it for, and it didn't get used, and that's why I brought up that maybe they can be used if we have to pay extra to patrol, we don't want fifty-six for speeders.
Do you want to expand that, Mr. Quinn, cause that was, that was actually last council's decision?
The fifty thousand dollars is to make sure a deputy is in the house at any one time. Uh, let's just say that someone's off on training, someone has a illness, there will still be a deputy, uh, in house at all times. That was requested council that there be a Tarrant County Sheriff's Office deputy in the council and the city at all times. And sometimes we had people that were on vacation, training, being sick, and we had no deputy in the city, so that's what's set for.
Very good. Um, I don't, did you mention that, uh, that fifty thousand dollars also covers baila charges? Yes, it does.
It covered the bailiars' support, which occurs twelve times a year.
Okay, well, this is Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, I make a motion to approve the proposed contract for FY twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two at seven hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents to the Tarrant County Sheriff's Office for Policing Services.
Scroll to the previous screen. Uh, I was gonna ask, uh, Mayor Pro Tim, we had discussed using seven thirty or seven thirty-two? Would you like to revise your motion?
Uh, my motion said seven thirty-two.
I thought you said seven thirty. So seven thirty, if you would-
Seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety and eighty-four cents.
Motion is made to approve the Tarrant County Interlocal Agreement for Policing Services for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year, uh, at seven hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars and eighty-four cents, is there a second?
This is Councilmember Clark, oh, forget it.
Uh, Councilmember Clark, did, did, was that your second?
Yes, I was, I, I don't know if Councilmember Rickett is doing it though as well.
Well, I heard you come through first.
Okay, sounds good.
Very good. All right, there's been a motion, a second, a roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye, and I'd like to make a comment, if you come back to me.
Very good. Uh, motion passes five zero, Councilmember Rob?
Uh, in the past, they have offered a ride-along, uh, to council members or, uh, members of the staff. I don't know that anybody ever accepted, possibly some did, I don't know, but I just thought I'd bring that up, uh, in case Councilmember Ricketts or Nahara, or even yourself, Mayor, would like to ride along with them. I think if we went through Sergeant Lamonion, they'd be happy to accommodate.
This is Councilmember Ricketts, Councilmember Rob, I've been in conversation with Sergeant Lamonion already for a ride-along, probably later this month.
Very good, have any of the previous council members or any staff been on a ride-along? Very good, well, you, uh, let us know, let me know, we'll get your name in the hat. Very good. You know, and I, I would think maybe we can check with them, they might offer that for the, uh, public too, of any citizens that might be interested, and that might go very worthwhile, that they get to see firsthand what their day looks like, and where they actually spend their time. I think I will ask for that. Good, that's good, I'm glad you brought that up, thank you. Item seven E, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act on ordinance number twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one, amending Article five, design and development standards of the comprehensive zoning ordinance by adding a new section five point ten, exterior site lighting, and amending table five point one dash one, design and development standards, applicability matrix to add exterior site lighting. Um, versus, uh, staff presentation, who is presenting that?
Uh, I think Rob and I will present. Uh, Chairman Greg Kadesh of the Planning and Zoning Commission requested that the lighting standards be placed on the planning zoning agenda for discussion. Um, there had been, um, the lighting standards were taken out of the zoning ordinance, and it was written quite possibly because the, uh, overlay districts were, were eliminated. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission had quite a good discussion, they, they wanted the light, lighting standards put back into the, uh, regulations, uh, so they could be enforced, and that's a legal matter, so I'm turning it over to Rob Alabon.
Uh, thank you, Jim, Mayor and Council, yeah, Jim did a good job laying the background out for that, I was asked, um, I guess at P and Z's request to draft the ordinance that's before you tonight. Um, I al- I also, I don't have the exact answer, but to the best of our ability and going back and looking, um, the previous exterior site lighting standards were in the pr- prior zoning ordinance, section that dealt with all of our cities' overlay districts, used to have multiple overlay districts in the city. When new zoning ordinance was rewritten and adopted in twenty seventeen, all of the overlay districts were removed, except for the Alliance Airport Overlay District. Um, so as part of that, our thought is that when the overlay districts were removed, exterior site lighting standards must have been removed as well, and whether that was unintended or not, that happened. And so I think P and Z realized that they're, they're missing, they wanted to, um, look at adding those standards back. So what this proposed ordinance does is add back same exact, I didn't change, I just added them verbatim, same exterior lighting standards that were in the prior ordinance. Um, these lighting standards would apply to all new development and redevelopment in all of the zoning districts, except for the Alliance Airport Overlay District, which has its, its own lighting standards in, in it already. Um, so that ordinance went to P and Z, uh, at the end of September, and they recommended approval. And P and Z also asked that the ordinance address when lighting plan is required to be submitted as part of the development process. So attached, your packet back up, there's a redlined version of the ordinance and then a clean version. I included the redlined version, so you can see what I added after the P and Z meeting. That is a section that says, lighting plan, meeting the requirements of this section shall be submitted to the city as part of the preliminary plat- development plat application property. So we've added a provision that says when an applicant has to submit lighting plan, and that would be with preliminary plat- at preliminary plat status. With that, Jim, unless you have anything to add, that, that kind of sums up what the ordinance is.
I have nothing further to add, uh, P and Z approved the ordinance for the item unanimously.
Oh, uh, let me add a few things to that, they proved it unanimously. And, uh, to go back many, many years, cause I was mayor at that time, and I think, uh, Councilmember Rob was probably on the P and Z that did all that work, and it was many, many, many months, uh, of work to draft that lighting ordinance, and the gist of it was to respect, um, our night sky, and to respect your neighbors, and not have these imposing lights that, uh, and it's more directional type light as well, that was, uh, instead of having these ominous directional bulbs out there that go everywhere and does no one any good, in fact, causes irritation at times. And, uh, uh, Chairman Kadesh called me up, and we were talking about it, and I thought, that's a great thing, love to see it go, get reenacted. And, uh, he moved forward with it, he carried the ball, and, uh, P and Z, uh, passed it unanimously, and it's here before you now, and, uh, it's a good thing. So if, uh, with regard to the staff presentation, if there's no other staff presentation, then we will go into the public hearing. Is any other staff presentation? Uh, with that, we'll go into the public hearing. It is eight oh one PM, open the public hearing on this item, is there anyone that'd like to, uh, speak to this item? For or against? All right, I have no one that's, uh, on video conference or, uh, telephone, and there is no one, and there's no one in the, uh, chambers, so I'll close the public hearing, item three is discussion, so council, it's open for discussion, does, uh, I'll turn it over to you.
This is Councilmember Ricketts, I do have a question on the aspect of this is a, again, it got stopped, and now we're getting ready to start it again, there's been quite a few final plats, quite a few plats going on in between those two times, how's that affecting anything that's already been approved?
They're not gonna have to go back and redo anything, that lighting that they put in, but that's a good question, uh, Rob Alabon, is, would that affect any approved plats?
No, sir, I think you were correct, when you said basically the ones that have, have been approved before we reenact these requirements are basically grandfathered.
Okay, so that affects none of the, uh, seven developments that you know of right now, that affects none of any of the commercial development plats that have been approved. So this will be only in effect for any new development that comes forth. And, but we might talk to the developers to consider it. We like our night sky, what's left of it. If there's not any other discussion, we'll move over to, uh, four, and for consideration and action, are you ready to do so, council?
Uh, this is Councilmember Rob, I'd just like to say this was, uh, unintended consequence of that, uh, ordinance revision back in twenty sixteen, that we did, I guess was adopted twenty seventeen. You know, I'm, and unfortunately, nobody caught it till now, it certainly wasn't intentional, cause, as Mayor pointed out, we did a lot of work to, back when I was chairman of P and Z, ten plus years ago, uh, to get this in there, we, uh, we, we ended up taking suggestions from Hillwood, who we all, uh, thought had an exemplary standard, and still does for this kind of thing, so we took their standards and adopt- adopted it, uh, to our ordinance, unfortunately, it was mostly in the overlay districts that we had, cause we had, uh, we found the overlay districts were beneficial at the time, and the ordinance was review- were revised, uh, they were taken out, and this was mistakenly, uh, went out with it, so I'm glad to see this back, I don't, I don't know that there's been a lot of, uh, developments that probably violated the standards, but, uh, because I've, I've seen, uh, planning and zoning make recommendations about, you know, changing fixtures and things on warehouses, and so I don't know that we lost a lot, but we could have, but it's, it's good that we won't in the future, so I'm glad to see this back, and I support.
Thank you, Councilmember Rob, very good. Um, well, let's go to item number four, consideration and action. A motion be appropriate if you're inclined.
This is Councilmember Clark, I move that we approve ordinance number zero two five dash twenty twenty-one, amending Article five, design and development standards of the comprehensive zoning ordinance by adding a new section five point ten, exterior site lighting, and amending table five point one dash one, design and development standards, applicability matrix to add exterior site lighting.
Motion is made to approve ordinance number zero two five dash twenty twenty-one, is there a second?
Councilmember Rob, seconds.
Councilmember Rob, seconds, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Thank you, council, very good, motion passes five zero. Uh, this next item, uh, seven F, discuss, consider, and act on approving the transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the contingency fund to support the procurement of consultation services related to prospective land acquisition, and I would like to come back to item seven F after our executive session, if we could do so, please. And so therefore, I would say let's take a ten-minute recess. It is eight oh six PM, August, or excuse me, October fourth, twenty twenty-one, and we will reconvene in ten minutes into executive session, so remember, council, you'll need to close out of this meeting and open up in your, uh, executive session link. Thank you. Thank you.
And Ma- Mayor.
Yes.
Mayor, if I might, Mayor, if I might ask you, uh, would you please go ahead and read the executive session topics so you can, uh, go into executive session?
Oh, read them. Oh, I'm, thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the, um, do I need to read all the preamble?
No, sir, that's not required, but the, just the topics we're going into.
Yes. Okay. Executive Session eight A is Section five-five-one point oh seven-two, Government Code Deliberation Concerning Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. And that has to do with property acquisition for public facilities. Eight B is Section five-five-one point oh seven-two, Government Code Deliberation Concerning Purchase, Exchange, Lease, or Value of Real Property. Um, first item is property acquisition for Hasslet Parkway, five oh one Schoolhouse Road, Parcels twelve, twelve DE, twenty-six DE, Northwest Independence School District. And, yeah, next item is Parcel fourteen, seventeen, and twenty.
Thanks, sir.
You'll get me trained. Thank you. All right, we're in recess.